They called to order the redevelopment agency meeting of July 27, 2016. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing. Receive public input on the draft project area plan budget for the proposed Pioneer Technology District Economic Development Project area formerly called the New Bingham Highway EDA, the project area. And whether the draft plan should be approved, revised, or rejected. All interested parties are invited to attend. David Oka?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, this is a procedural public hearing in order to establish the EDA. As you all know, we're looking at this area as home for a large company at this time. Not only that, but it provides opportunities for other industrial investments in the future.
Questions from the board? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing for item 2A of the redevelopment agency meeting. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, item 2A, and return to the council. Put it to the board. We'll move to business item 3A, approve the minutes of June 22, 2016, as presented in your packet.
Move to approve?
Good. With motion by Board Member McConaughey and a second by Board Member Burton. Discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Chair Ralph?
Yes.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes five in favor.
Item 3B, discussion and possible action on resolution number 185 approving the proposed project area plan for the proposed Pioneer Technology District Economic Development Project area formerly called New Bingham Highway EDA. David?
Yes, this is a companion item to the public hearing. It is in order and staff recommendations for approval.
Questions from council and/or motion, uh, from board and/or motion? Board Member Nichols?
Think I move to approve, again, item 3B.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Nichols and a second by Board Member McConaughey. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Board Member Jacob?
Aye.
Chair Ralph?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes five in favor.
We had a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting. So moves? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They're adjourned. They call to order the city council meeting of July 27, 2016. First item is a pledge of allegiance. It will be led by former Mayor Melissa Johnson.
Would everyone please rise and repeat the pledge with me? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You may be seated.
Item 3, communications. City manager?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
May I turn this back on? I'd ask the city council mayor to consider there is a need to appoint one member of the city council to serve on the employee discharge appeal board. We'd like to have that person recognized and placed up for consideration in the next public meeting, so I'd ask for you to consider whether or not we can discuss that later this evening, who might be the right person for the city council. But that, I have nothing more to add. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. David Oka?
Yes, um, we received an invitation to the groundbreaking of the Residence Inn at Jordan Landing. That will take place on Monday, August the 8th at four o'clock. I will go ahead and forward that to everyone just in case somebody didn't receive that. That's all I have tonight.
Brian Clay?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Department of Environment, the Department of Environmental Safety, um, has lifted the, uh, I can't talk today, has lifted the advisory on the algae bloom that took place in Utah Lake. We are able now to use secondary water. We've, today, we switched over to secondary water on Veterans Memorial and the soccer complex. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Nothing tonight.
Wendell Reedy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let you know that we received the last order of shipment of Sternberg lights, the LED lights, yesterday. So those are the residential lights. They'll be installed by the end of this week. We wanted to thank the council for your support in funding that program, and I'd like to thank my staff for all the work that they did in making sure that it came out the right way. So we still have a few things that we need to work out with adapters for our existing poles, but basically it's pretty much done. Thank you.
Wendell, I just had a question. Have we received the rebate, or do we put in for the rebate now from Rocky Mountain Power?
We, we have not received it at this point. We have all the paperwork in place. We just, what we have to do now is they have to come out and actually audit us to make sure that we installed everything that we said we installed, then they give us the rebate.
Okay, thank you. Chief Ackley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to make you aware, in the fire department, we had a retirement last week. Captain John Gunderson, who's been with the city for 22 years, retired, and so we wish him well in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Chief Diamond?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just want to remind you that we are having our citizens academy, this will be starting on the 11th. So in a couple of weeks, they will be starting again and going through that. We also have our National Night Out Against Crime on August 2nd, which is next Tuesday. So if you want to participate in that, I know there's a couple of council members that are holding or participating in their neighborhood ones themselves, but please come out and let us know that you're interested, and we'll, we'll have you go around with us on that. I did attend one last night, they had a scheduling conflict in their neighborhood, but I did attend one last night at Williamsburg Circle, but there was probably 50-ish people there in attendance, so it was very good, very good attendance there. Also, we have, um, our, we're in the middle of our selection process for, to fill a sergeant vacancy that we have. That process will be completed probably Wednesday of next week, and we should be able to announce who that new sergeant's going to be next Thursday, so tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I will at the risk of, no, I'll say mine for the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. Just have a few things. First of all, Wendell already hit on the algae bloom. I just want to thank city staff, also the Water Conservancy District staff for being communicative throughout the whole process. It was very helpful to know that we were prompt at stopping the, um, about the spoiled water supply until things had calmed down, and at least we had some, some good data to move forward. It's very appreciative for the quick response of both the city and also the Water Conservancy District. On that also, on that same note, we had a pipe break this last week that impacted the city. The council was aware of it, I don't know how much the city was aware of it, because it was addressed rapidly, and both city staff and also Water Conservancy District staff worked feverishly to get that back online. And just so everyone knows, it was a, it was a contractor instigated issue, it wasn't something that was just a failure, it was actually a contractor-initiated accident. Anyway, appreciate it again, city staff and district personnel for that. I wanted to hit on this, it's that time of year, water conservation, it's key to our city for our water rates. Just because everyone who comes to the meeting might be new, might be your first time, I'd just like to share this, particularly this time of year, our water rates every year are based on a peaking factor, which means that time of year when the most amount of water that's needed, the Conservancy District has to plan for that amount of water in ongoing years. So they establish our rates as a city based on that peaking factor. So what that means is here we are in July and August, it's that time where it's most important fiscally to be conserving your water, not just because conservation's the right thing to do, but because it directly impacts the charges that we will receive from the district. So it's just a, a good reminder to conserve particularly these next couple months. And I, I did have a couple other comments, but I think, I think I'm going to defer, I'd like to hear the public comments section first, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for bringing up the National Night Out Against Crime, and I am going to be at one of those, and those of you who haven't been to one, find out where the one is in your neighborhood, go to them, they're a lot of fun, and you learn some important things. Second of all, I happen to know we have two varsity teams in our audience today, so thank you varsity teams for coming. I also love orange. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. The more items I'll bring up at this point is, you'll recall that, well, we've had quite a few conversations about the possibility of building a performing arts center, kind of a community arts building. We applied about a year and a half ago for a grant with the county to get matching funds for the design of that, and we were notified that they had accepted our, our application. So we had 125,000 that had been put aside previously, and they said that they would match that. I forwarded a copy of the proposed interlocal agreement to our city manager for review with the intent that we can discuss how we want to proceed at a future city council meeting. So unless there is any opposition to placing that on a future agenda, I just want to make you aware that we have that, and it'll be coming up soon. Any opposition or?
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thanks. We'll move to citizens' comments. There I have several signed up to speak tonight. As a reminder, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak on the subject of your choice. Former Mayor Melissa Johnson would be first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In the absence of two of the council members, I would request that I be allowed to give a hard copy of my comments to the city clerk and ask that she make copies for the two council members that are missing, make sure they receive that. Thank you. "I solemnly swear to support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Utah and the laws and ordinances of the City of West Jordan and to discharge the duties of my office with fidelity." These words should be very familiar to many of you in this room. Every elected and appointed official in the city, every police officer, firefighter, swears this oath before taking office: to serve the City of West Jordan. It's been over a decade since I was first sworn in to office as a member of the city council and later as mayor. I took this oath very seriously, knowing that I was agreeing to be held to a higher standard of conduct. I'm here tonight to comment on the actions of Councilman Jeff Haga on July 19, 2016, as they were reported in the West Jordan Journal and shown on several police recordings. In the interest of time, I will not repeat the allegations against Mr. Haga or the official charges filed, and would only direct anyone who is interested in viewing the video to the website at www.westjordanjournal.com. Public office is not a shield to be used to deflect responsibility for your actions. The fact that you're a council member does not give you a free pass to ignore the law. It does the exact opposite. By swearing the oath of office, you promise not to only passively obey, but to actively defend. Tonight, I'm asking for two things. First, I'm asking the council to publicly censure Councilman Jeff Haga for his actions. Send a strong message that it is not okay for a representative of the city to disregard the law or to use the phrase "I am a councilman" to excuse his actions or request special treatment. Second, I am asking for Councilman Haga's immediate resignation. If he cannot keep the promise he made the day he took office, a solemn oath that he would obey the law, then he should step aside. The residents of our city deserve better.
Mayor, council members, Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South. One of the things I'm here before you today is concerning the 70th South reconstruction for the overpass. I'm greatly disappointed in how this is playing out. It seems like every time I get word about where this overpass is going, it changes. Things that were told to us that absolutely could not happen, all of a sudden mysteriously can now happen. I've got to be honest with you, my first thought was, is exactly who runs this city? It sounds like the Jordan School District is the one that has oversight over what happens in our city, and I don't think that's right. They were given a plan, they sat right here in this council chambers and said that they would follow what the city asked for, and the next thing I know, we got a plan going in place that nobody's ever talked about, and all of a sudden, it's, they're all up in arms about it. So, um, you know, I just got to ask that, how much clout does the, the school district really have in something that is more than just wrapped around their 185 days that, um, that they're using this facility? They were getting, you know, the availability of, of $2 million was to be given to them to, to provide the absolute safest route for those children, and it's just being washed under the bridge, so. Another thing too that I've noticed that I'm a little perturbed about is, um, I drive every day along 3200 West, going to and from work, and, and the city did a wonderful job of putting in a crosswalk with lights and, and, and what I see every day just about is residents of the apartment complexes totally ignoring these crosswalks that have been put in place, and, you know, when they get hit, it's always blamed on the driver. But yet, here and right in front of Macy's, cars are coming in and out and transferring. I would really like to see our law enforcement, I know they're overwhelmed and, and, but there's got to be something to make these people accountable for their actions. They can walk 200 feet down the road and crossing the crosswalk without jeopardizing my livelihood, my life, and my family's by crossing where they shouldn't be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, can we please pause? Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting? We are privileged to gather here together in the system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faith, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected, and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we're about to undertake. Thank you. Okay, uh, I do want, our city manager is supposed to be the boss of our chief of police. Now, you know, we pay taxes here in West Jordan, and I'm sorry, folks, the previous chief of police, McGuire, always came to West Jordan City Council when the police chiefs were being indoctrinated. Those are my taxes. I want to see the new policeman. I want to congratulate him. Do you know, they are putting their lives in front of us, but our current chief denies those officers to come before Salt Lake, I mean, West Jordan Council meeting, to come so that we can go ahead and say hello, we love you, we, good luck, God loves you. And I deploy the new chief of police. He will not do it. I've asked him over and over again, but instead, when those police officers are being indoctrinated, he hasn't done it 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon. Hello, folks, we are not always available. And I am asking Mark Paleish, who is the boss of Chief Diamond, to please demand Chief Diamond to bring those officers before us at West Jordan Council meeting. It's abominable that he's hiding. Anyway, thank you all, God loves you. I have to tell you a joke.
Your time's up, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll just try to hurry and get through this. On Saturday, August 16th, I was at the Smith's Food and Drug on 4080 West and 90th South, and when I pulled in, there was two big dogs left in a car, and it was like 100 degrees. I went in, talked to the people at Smith's, they wouldn't do anything, they're too interested in selling groceries. So I called the Western Police Department, took about 20 minutes, which I thought was fair, for the officer, Officer Olson to get there. And he took all my information, he wouldn't let me do anything about the dogs, I wanted to get them out of there, and he wouldn't let me. And he told me just to go sit in my car or leave, you would take care of it, and I wasn't comfortable leaving. So I waited, and I waited 55 minutes, and I kept going up saying, "Are you going to do anything about it? These dogs are going to die." And he wouldn't do it. And I was getting upset, he said, "I called animal control," and he said, "They're not going to do anything about it." I run her, you know, he ran the information on this woman, I guess she was 83 years old, still is, and, uh, he says, "We're not going to do anything about it." I thought we had laws against this sort of thing, and so I was upset, he told me to leave, I wasn't out of line by any means, but he just told me, you know, "I'll take care of it, we've got a case number," which he wrote down the wrong case number as well. So I pulled out, and as I did, one of the other women that were in the parking lot went running over, and he was pulling out too, and she knocked on his window, he stayed in his air-conditioned car, and I guess she got after him, so I pulled over and waited. And then I went around and talked to her when she got done, and she said, "Well, he told me that he went and talked to that woman." That's a flat lie. He never got out of his car, I was there the whole time. So I went over and took pictures of that woman, I took pictures of the dogs, I took pictures of the car, and I'm just wondering, I mean, are, that feels like discrimination to me, if it would have been a woman of a different age, maybe younger, or a different race, someone that wasn't quite as well off as her. She obviously had a lot of money, she had a very nice car, personalized plates, would that officer have treated her the same way? And I hate that he lied to me. I, I feel like I've been, I feel like I've been cheated, and those dogs were cheated. So I just wanted to bring this to you, I'm going to give it to Officer Diamond here, and I feel better, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, for your time. My name is Shelley Turnbull, and I live at 8032 Island Creek Drive. Recently, I've read of some poor decisions by, made by Mr. Haga. His decisions and actions have the potential to tarnish the image of West Jordan. The previous mayor said things much more eloquently than I can, so I just won't remind you of what she said, but because of this, I'm asking Mr. Haga to resign his position on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time. I guess I was mistaken, I thought the, the discussion tonight was going to be on the data collection from our cell phones. I just would want to urge council and mayor to vote against this. It's not a good thing. We have too many things in our life right now that are already tracking every move we make on our cell phones. Our government does not need to intrude anymore into our cell phones, whether it's with a third party or through whoever it may be. To me, this is a total disregard for the, the Fourth Amendment and, and, and everything that it stands for. This would only open the door for more information. You know, once, once we've got the door cracked, it doesn't take much to kick it open from there, and I would urge council to, to strongly look at this and, and not, and not do it. One more thing I'd like to mention is, is I'd like to echo Melissa's, Melissa's words about Councilman Haga. He's a total and utter embarrassment to our city, the citizens of the city, and himself. He has been for coming on three years now. This isn't the first thing he's done, it's the first thing of this matter he's done, but each and every one of us here know that it's not. He's an embarrassment to our city. He needs to be asked to resign immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that I have signed up to speak tonight. If there's anyone else wishing to speak during citizen comments, now would be the time. As a reminder, you'll be allowed three minutes, and please state your name and address.
I'm Alan Anderson, 4744 Collander Drive, West Jordan, Utah. Grateful to be here tonight. I am chairperson of the West Jordan Sustainability Committee, and I want to echo Councilman Nichols' comments about water conservation, which is something our committee will be taking up later this year. And it's not on the agenda for tonight, but I, tonight I can be here. And I just want to emphasize that we can, as we talk with ACE Disposal and some of the recycling matters that are going on within the city, we had a great presentation at our last Sustainability Committee meeting regarding recycling and how we are at a 35% contamination rate, which is things that shouldn't be in recycling. And maybe working together with the Rocky Mountain recyclers, ACE Disposal, and others as we renegotiate those things to maybe better educate the residents of what can go in the recycling bins and reduce our processing costs that it takes. We, we pay one of the highest processing costs in recycling because we have to pull out the material that shouldn't be in there. And so as you work on that process with ACE Disposal, I would hope you take And so as you work on that process with ACE Disposal, I would hope you take those comments into your mind and use that. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the citizen's comments and move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to take a pause, and some very harsh words have been stated tonight, and I think they were appropriate. I, I just want, just for the public record, I want everyone to know, I sent a text to our city attorney while I was up here. In full disclosure, I hope you don't mind, David, I'm just going to quote exactly what it is, just in the sake of transparency. And I asked this question. I said, can we censor Councilman Haga without it being on the agenda? And the response was, I would not for that reason, and it would be best allowed a criminal matter be concluded. That is an opinion, not a legal conclusion. And I appreciate his advice. With that being said, I'm going to take about half of our city attorney's advice, and I'm going to recommend that we place on our agenda the next meeting, censure of Councilman Haga for misconduct. If you'll please add that to the agenda. Thank you.
We'll move to the consent items. I have had no one ask to have anything pulled. Councilmember Cunningham?
I believe there was one item that Mr. Rigby had requested. There was an email about something I thought earlier today.
Oh, that's on the business items.
That's under the business items.
Okay. Never mind then.
Motion would be in order. Councilmember Jacob?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolle?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes five in favor.
Moving to the public hearing, the item 6A has been continued until August 10th, 2016. We need a motion to move that to August 10th. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, mayor. Not necessarily a motion, but if you would entertain a couple of comments, I wasn't able to share since I wasn't here at the prior meeting.
That would be in order.
Okay. Thank you. So I went back and I listened to the comments from the meeting and what was shared, and there are a lot of possibilities as to what could be done with that data. It's a lot of information that gives a lot of insight that we are currently lacking. However, I'm concerned with, I have quite a few concerns about how it was proposed to be done. It seems very similar to, well, in the interest of time, I'll cut my comments short. The most equal comparison I could find is back in 2013, Google paid out a $7 million settlement because they had been putting together their street view, they'd been sending vehicles around to take pictures, but they had also been collecting Wi-Fi data as they were going about doing that. I'm not sure the difference between the Wi-Fi data that they're collecting from a mobile, in a mobile fashion, versus what it would be if you were to have something on city property collecting it that was more static. But I'm really concerned about that, and I also don't think that there's a public appetite to see the city get involved with that kind of personal information. So while I like the ideas, and as an analyst by trade, I'm incredibly intrigued by what could be done with that information, but as a representative of the city, I don't think that this is something that there's a public appetite for. So with that thought in mind, I would be opposed to continuing this, and we prefer to let the issue lie.
Is that a motion?
I'm not sure if we've got a public hearing, would the motion be to?
To continue it or not?
No, not to continue, but just to, I guess, to cancel the public hearing. Can we do that or?
I believe we can not continue it.
Looks like there's.
Can I hear the question one more time? Excuse me.
So we have a public hearing on the agenda that shows that it's to be continued, but if we wanted to just cancel that, can we make a motion to cancel the public hearing, or do we actually have to hold the public hearing because it's been agendized as such?
In this instance, the request for the public hearing was one that was requested by a member of council just to accommodate the concern of finding out from the public. This particular agenda item does not require a public hearing. So if there was a vote and nothing approved, that doesn't mean that the contract couldn't be approved later by members of staff presented to you for finalization. So to answer your question, you don't have to have the public hearing, but I do think you can in fact vote to reschedule it.
I don't want to reschedule it. I want to cancel it and just move forward.
Well, then, in that case, if there was no motion and it failed for a second or it failed for a vote, it wouldn't be back on the agenda anytime soon.
So it would just simply be dead?
Wouldn't be completely dead.
Okay. Based on our legal advice, I have no motion. No one wants to speak on this issue? We'll move on to the business items. Business item 7A has been pulled at UDOT's request. Is that right? So we will move to business item 7B. Report and update on the city of West Jordan's fiscal year 2015-2016. Order new report. Bill?
I just refer you to the hard copy that was placed on your chairs there. Unfortunately, it had a formula error in the electronic version, and so the prior year for the enterprise funds has an error. So anyway, just refer to the hard copy on your desk, and this report was prepared on July 15th. And so we're just in the process of closing our books. And just for your information, June 30th is really kind of a hard time to really get a definite projection because we're in the process, revenues are for 60 days out are accounted back to June 30th. And we're also trying to true up the numbers as far as expenditures for services performed prior to June 30th, but the invoices are coming in afterwards. And so this is our information as of July 15th for the period ended June 30th. And so are there any questions regarding that report?
Questions from counsel? Thank you. I'll look at it. Thank you. We'll move to item 7C. Discussion and possible action on ordinance 16-33, adopting the official project area plan for the Pioneer Technology District Economic Development Project area. David Oka?
Thank you. As was previously addressed in the redevelopment agency meetings, the legislative body being the city council must also adopt this area. As I previously stated, this will not only accommodate the project that we're entertaining at this time, but open up a lot of opportunities for large employment-based companies. Our recommendation is for approval.
Questions?
No questions. Go to motion.
Okay. Motion would be in order.
Move to approve resolution 16-125, adopting the project plan area for the economic development area number five, Pioneer Technology District.
Second?
Wait a minute. Is it 16.33, right?
16.33?
Sorry, 16.33. 16.33, but the rest of it. Economic Development Area Number Five, Pioneer Technology District. That's accurate.
Second?
I'm sorry? Did you say resolution?
Okay. He's right. I was reading ord, resolution, but it's ordinance 16-33. Right there. Thank you.
And your second?
I'll second it.
Discussion to the motion. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolle?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Item 7D. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution 16-125 regarding an appeal of impact fees paid for Overland Storage LLC and an reimbursement in the amount of $74,962.93. David?
Yes, thank you, mayor. When Overland Storage came in initially to apply for permits, they were in the zone that demanded a impact fee of $108,000. They planned to appeal pending the outcome of a couple of traffic studies. They went after two consultants, PEC and Fisher-Weiss, and it was the recommendation of Fisher-Weiss that, yes, they do not impact the roads as other industries might. And it was their recommendation based on those traffic studies that the $33,000 would be more appropriate.
Any questions? Questions from counsel? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, mayor. My apologies for getting my tongue tied on the earlier one. I had this one up as well, so I could get some of my questions, and my apologies for the crossover. So where they're asking for, they're located in an industrial area, but because they're not necessarily, they don't believe that how the same impact as a regular industrial business, they're asking for the reduction. Have we done that before for any other type of business? For example, if there is a sandwich shop that locates in an industrial area, do they still pay the fees based on that industrial zoning?
We have considered appeals before, yes.
What have been the outcome of those prior appeals?
We rely a lot on the consultants for information that is outside of our influence, and in many cases, we have granted those reductions.
Do you have examples of the last few times it's happened?
I don't at this point.
Okay. My original thought was I would be opposed to this because if they're locating in that area, that's what's expected for that area, they should pay what's expected there. If there's been a precedent set that we consider those appeals, I'd be curious to see how consistent we've been or see those that haven't. See, kind of city comparison, those that have requested an appeal have been granted, those who have requested an appeal and it's not, and those who have just gone with the regular amount. So if we don't have that information, and my apologies, I wasn't able to get that question to you sooner so that you could be a little bit more prepared. It wasn't fair for me to throw that out right now last minute. But I would propose, unless there's other questions, at least myself, I'm not ready to support this without that information. So I would be in favor of tabled until our next meeting when that information be provided to make a decision in scope of what's been done historically. So we're in line with precedent.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I like what Councilmember McConaughey is saying. I could be supportive of that direction, only in that I just want to see the fairness. I want to be fair with all parties, not just one. So I would just like to take a look at that.
If that's no other. Thank you, mayor. There's no other comments. Since this is a resolution on ordinance, I don't believe a motion would be needed. Rather, just direction to the staff to put it on the next agenda. And I would, I would move that we direct staff to put this on the next agenda and then also ask that, I'll leave it at that and add an additional comment after. Motion to direct staff to move it to the next meeting.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion? Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, mayor. I just didn't want this part to be part of the motion. I'd also be curious to know if we have a formal appeal process that is noticed to everybody who might be making an application or might be paying impact fees. If there are some who appealed, if it's just something that they've done on their own, or if they're actively made aware of what's in code so they know they're out for appeal, I want to know if it's like smaller mom-and-pop shops, people who are doing things on their own, or larger corporations that are going through, that have legal departments at their disposal that are bringing these types of things to us. So I want to make sure that we're fair to all.
We'll bring that back as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Before we vote, I just have one comment. I would like to see the information as well, but I think it's been in very few instances. And when you move into an area, you benefit from the roads that are there, and the impact to the roads is what impact fees are supposed to cover. So I'd advise caution in approving this. Let's vote.
Mayor Rolle?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
The vote passes five in favor.
Okay. Final remarks. Councilmember Jacob, you had some remarks for the end of the meeting?
Yes, I did. Actually, they've been covered by other councilmembers quite succinctly, so I'll defer further, I guess.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to move to a closed session in the conference room. Do you have a comment first? A motion to move to the conference room to a closed session, and we will adjourn from there.
So moved.
Do you want to just state the reason?
All right. Okay, go ahead. That's a motion.
Thank you, mayor. I move to move to closed session to discuss character, professional competence, or physical, mental health of the individual. Strategy session to discuss pending a reasonably imminent litigation. Strategy session to discuss purchase exchange or lease a real car, including any form of water right and water shares. And we will adjourn from that meeting.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Burton, a second by Councilmember Nichols.
That's okay.
Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolle?
Yes.
The vote passes five in favor.
We've moved to closed session, and adjourn from there. Thank you.